All right, I want to call the Finance and Law Subcommittee meeting to order. It's Wednesday, January 6, 2021. Mr. Souza.
Present.
And Mr. Fiori.
Present.
Also in attendance, we have Superintendent Cabral and Assistant Superintendent Monahan. And I'll try to speak slowly so you can hear me. We have student activities which there aren't any. It was the first item on the agenda. Second item is bills payable in an amount of $1,097,630.51, which is of my committee.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed this thing today. I don't find, I don't have any questions. I'll move repay the warrant as presented, $1,097,630.51.
I've also read it now seconded.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none or hearing none? Roll call, Mr. Souza.
Yes.
And Mr. Fiori.
Yes.
And Mr. Martin votes yes. Item number three is a grants update, and this all has to do with COVID. And I'll turn this over to Ms. Monahan.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. As you see in your packet, we have presented you with a memo that has all of our COVID grants that we received. In a previous school committee meeting, it was asked to present to the school committee what we have purchased with our COVID grants. So as you may be aware, we've received three COVID grants that we have been using. So the one that we have, the first one is the Remote Learning Grant. And that one has been awarded, we had an awarding of $640,309. Right now, currently, the grant has a zero dollar balance, as it was supposed to be expended by the end of December. So we have done so as well. So if you go ahead and look also in attachment, you will see what each grant has, what we spent on each grant. And then the next grant that we used was the CVRF reopening grant. That was the one that we received, $225 per student, which resulted in a $1.8 million grant awarding. We are now currently at a zero dollar grant balance because we were supposed to go ahead and extend the grant by December 30th, 31st. As you may be aware, they have extended the deadline, but we were very cautious and we didn't know if that was coming through. So we made sure that we expended all the grants, those two grants, to zero dollars by the end of December. The last grant that we currently have is called the ESER, which is also known as the CARES Grant. And we were awarded two point, about a little over $2 million. As of right now, we have a balance of $832,598.27. That grant is closing by the end of June of 2021. So currently, we do have a balance and we are going to carry that and use what we need to purchase using for anything that we are needing in our schools for the COVID monies. So again, like I did state, in addition to the memo, you will see three Excel spreadsheets. And each of the Excel spreadsheets will have, each of the Excel spreadsheets will have the name of the grant, the items we have purchased. And you will see that the first two grants have zero balances. And then the last one, as I stated before, has a remaining balance of $800,000.
Thank you, Ms. Monahan. Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Monahan, thank you for the update. You know, with this, with the PPEs and trying to make up any, any issues with COVID. Try to offset any of the mitigation for COVID. It doesn't take long to add up quick. So could you just go, so Congress just passed and President Trump signed into law, I don't know when it was, last week, I think, you know.
Long as you know, I've already gotten my check.
No comment. I got something to tell you after. So how does that relate to this? So which one of these, barring once the Biden administration gets in, because that could be a whole different animal. Right now, where do we stand with getting additional monies into this?
We have not received any additional information with what's coming up for CARES Act in September of 2021. There is definitely some things that are in the way that you're hearing about the Biden administration. But as of right now, we do not have any updates regarding our recent stimulus or anything like that. So we will wait and hear, and we're just going to go ahead and plan accordingly and be, as, let's just say, we're going to be very careful in how we spend our monies.
Yeah, and I'm sure that COVID mitigation is just an ongoing process. But this, this list is pretty extensive. Yeah, purifiers, face shields, you know, and then the technology webcams and the technology boards, whatever they call, I forgot what they call those.
Promethean boards, yes.
Lithium, lithium.
Promethean, yes.
Yeah, you caught me on that one. So anyway, so right now, we don't know. I'm assuming no matter what happens with Congress and the president-elect coming up in January, we'll have some more information coming up on, once they, once they actually read the bill of that President Trump signed, of this outgoing administration and the outgoing, and the outgoing. Once, once they sign, once they start reading it, we'll probably have more information this month sometime. Is that what you're hearing or?
We're hoping. I mean, we do hear that the governor usually does go ahead and, and provide us a budget for FY22 coming up in the mid-January. But I see Mr. Cabral's hand up, so I guess he has more information as well.
The other thing, Chairman. The other thing I would say, Mr. Souza, I have a call with Commissioner Riley tomorrow. So and that'll be one of the questions regarding when you can anticipate to hear or if Desi has heard anything regarding funding and how the state plans to utilize that funding. Because I've heard mixed, that the state may use that funding to help offset implementing the Student Opportunity Act. They may use it as part of Chapter 70 or the backfill of Chapter 70. So again, there's still a lot of questions to be asked and information that we need. And so we're going to be very cautious, knowing that any funds that we receive will be, will be helpful. So we're not going to get too high, we're not going to get too low, we're going to wait until we get the numbers, and we'll plan accordingly, as we have been doing so all along.
Yeah, and I think the key thing with that is making sure that if there's any wiggle room about how we can spend it, or you, what we can use it for, if they change that a little bit. That's the key to keeping up to date on that. And I know that's always a fluid situation. Mr. Chairman, Ms. Monahan, thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Any other comments from the Subcommittee? I just have one, and I'll recognize Mr. Darty.
Thank you.
The, the comment I want to make is, in case anyone's looking at this, this is a business manager's observation. How do you get to a zero balance of the two grants? I mean, obviously, you didn't spend these right to the penny. Okay, so what you do, and again, this is a business manager's perspective, what you do is you overspend the grant to be sure that you utilize all of it. And whatever is overspent, you take out of another account. That's not part of the grant. So I just wanted to make that clear, so that people don't think, how the heck did you spend right to the penny? So those two zero balances are true. They're really zero balances. She, she, Ms. Monahan and Mr. Cabral, used every penny they were entitled to use from those two grants. By doing so, they overspent them by a few dollars. And once the audit, so to speak, is done and they've paid the bills, whatever is over the grant amount will be taken out of another account. And it usually isn't very much money. But it's just to make sure that you spend every penny that you're entitled to. Thank you. Ms. Darty, I know you had your hand up.
Just a thank you, thank you for, to the committee for allowing me to make a remark or two. So just on, on that point, over time, Superintendent Cabral has told us, rightly so, that he intended to set aside about $1.2 million as a hedge against the '22 budget in the event that the state experienced a significant shortfall in funds to support us under Chapter 70. So I'm wondering if, and because these two accounts anyway, and notwithstanding the possibility that the federal government will funnel money down under the ESSER CARES Grant to supplement what we already have here for the remainder of the year. Is that, were you able, Superintendent, to set aside that one to a million as a hedge, which is a perfectly fine thing to do, as I understand? But were you able to do that? Does, these numbers don't seem to reflect that.
No, we, again, the plan was to spend the two grants that expired in December, which we've done, not knowing that they were going to be extended. And that the plan, the backup plan for CARES was to carry a million or a little over a million over into fiscal '21. Unfortunately, we're sitting at just over 800,000, so we're 200 shy, 400 shy of where we wanted to be. But carrying 800,000 into next year, that could be spent on PPE, nursing supplies, or additional supplies, custodial supply, cleaning supplies, will be very helpful in building our budget next year. And there may, there still may be charges depending on where we are with our appropriation. And we can charge off the grant onto our appropriation and then increase the amount of funds we have under the CARES. So right now, we're just under the goal of having a million dollars to carry over to help with our budget. We don't know what the CARES new stimulus bill will be bringing to the school department. And we don't know how the state plans to utilize those funds. But I feel good sitting on 800,000 right now, knowing that we also have our revolving account and that we'll also have grant carryover to help build our budget for fiscal '22. And I think everyone should really be focused on the third Wednesday in January, because that's usually when the governor releases their budget. Should, unless there's unforeseen circumstances, the third Wednesday of January is when we should expect to hear on fiscal '22. And that will be one of the questions I'll ask in my meeting tomorrow with Commissioner Riley.
Yeah, thank you. Good, good luck with that. Fiscal '21 is yet to be adopted. So I have two questions regarding the data here. One is that I see a line for Mr. Ferrari and wondering where his work has fit into the criteria for the utilization of these particular funds.
Yeah, as I've shared with the school board, Mr. Ferrari was managing our grants as that position has not been filled. Ferrari was managing the grants in addition to the CARES grants.
Okay, and the last thing is, I understand that, much to the surprise of the teachers when they came to work on Monday, there were desk shields. Is that the sneeze guards or is it, are those shields, little cubby, plastic cubbies called something else? And where are they reflected in this particular report?
Yeah, so again, we're always looking to make sure that we improve on our PPE and able to put our kids and teachers in safe learning environments. So the shields that Mrs. Monahan procured were utilized on the city side with their COVID money, correct, Mrs. Monahan?
I was actually going to say that in the facilities update, yes.
So what are they called?
It was not charged to us.
What are they called, Ms. Monahan?
They are considered to be desk dividers. You can call them sneeze guards. There's many different ways that you can call them. But yes, we did purchase them for all teachers, teachers' desks and also student desks. We do have a little bit of a glitch with Mulcahy, as Mulcahy, the new school, has those triangular desks and they don't fit 100% on those. So I'm working with Principal Takuta and also the vendor that we did purchase the dividers to see what we could do to really get them, a certain, a certain student divider, desk divider, whatever you want to call them, to make sure it works for that school. But yes, they have been purchased using the City Side CARES Act, because it's considered to be building-based.
Ah, I see. So, thank you. Thank you for putting this together. Thanks, Mr. Martin, for allowing me to make my remarks. Superintendent, for answering the question.
You're welcome. And I just want to add to what Mr. Cabral said about the wanting to have a million dollars or a million dollars plus in the CARES Act, carrying over for for the next, you know, for where we are right now. And as I go through the spreadsheet, as I said, my voice is not very strong. But as I go through this spreadsheet, I think we've bought a lot of the big ticket items out of the money that we have spent. So I don't see, you know, a lot of big ticket items necessary as we move forward. More PPE and things like that, which, they're big ticket items, but they're not as expensive as some of those cameras and air purifiers and things like that, and, and more computers.
And I, and I think the other thing is we have to understand is some of this, these grants are only mitigation grants. So we can't sub, sub, sub-plant the next year's budget with CARES money unless it's for direct mitigation of COVID. So we can't hire, you know, three class, three, three teachers because we want to reduce the class size to 10, things like that.
The only, the only, the only big ticket item you might see moving forward is Chromebook repairs. So as Chromebooks get damaged, Chromebooks are broken, we are, Mrs. Monahan is working, Mrs. Winnow, to make sure that our Chromebooks that we purchased are repaired so that we continually are able to replenish and refresh the, we've replaced the supply we have on hand. That, I foresee as being maybe the next big ticket item, but I mean, we're still getting quotes on that.
That might be a good internship.
That's in the works, Mr. Martin. It's in the works.
All right, anything, I don't think we need a motion. That was just for information purposes. The last item on the agenda is Facilities Update. Ms. Monahan.
I'll make it quick as we are past 6:00 PM. We are currently working with our OPM to continue working on the punch list at Mulcahy Elementary School, as there are some things that need to be taken care of. But they have been addressing things as they come up. The, as I said before, the student dividers have been delivered during the holiday break, and they will be now put on teachers' desks and student desks throughout the district. And that was used by the City CARES Act. Also using the City CARES Act, we went ahead and did updates to the HVAC system at Martin Middle School. So all of the unit ventilators in the classrooms are currently updated. And now I have put forth another possibility of having additional work done, and I have asked the city to see if they could pay for that as well. Lastly, Bennett has been getting their unit ventilators done in the classroom as well, using the City CARES Act money. So we will have two of our older schools with the older HVAC systems up to date in our classrooms. So we will go ahead and provide better air exchange quality rates in each of our classrooms in those schools. And that is the Facilities Update.
Anything else from the Subcommittee? Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Roll call, Mr. Fiori.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
And Mr. Martin votes yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, all set.
Thank you. I'd like to call the Wednesday, January 6, 2021 School Committee meeting to order. Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll.
Do you like the prayer first?
Yes, I'm sorry, the prayer and then call the roll. And then the other moment of silence, yes.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for the opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. And on the roll call, Ms. Darty.
Here.
Mr. Palowski.
Here.
Mr. Fiori.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. Martin.
Present.
Mrs. Almeida.
Present.
Mr. DeMello.
Present.
Mr. Souza.
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell. And we'd also like to ask for a moment of silence for Mrs. Jean Spearon Taylor, who passed away December 21st. She started off her career as a, with the TMLP, doing some work for them. And then she moved up gradually into the city, city side on the, Chris Clerk of the Council. She is the mother of, of our wonderful Dalahatong, and we ask for your prayers and for your thoughts and best wishes for this family and our sincere sympathy for them also. Moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. B, approval of the minutes? December 2nd?
So moved.
Roll call vote, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Mr. Darty.
Yes.
Mr. Palowski.
Yes.
Mr. Fiori.
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida.
Yes.
Mr. DeMello.
Yes.
And Mr. Souza.
Yes. And we're on to C on the agenda, and Student Council Representative Report. And it's my pleasure to welcome again, Anselyn Campbell for her report. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the school committee. Today, I have many huge accomplishments throughout the Tiger Nation to mention. These students have been accepted into prestigious colleges and universities. First, Olivia Dias was accepted into MIT. She had attended East Taunton Elementary and Martin Middle School. Michael Obian was accepted into Brown University. Michael came to the US from Nigeria in 2015. He has attended THS since 2016. Anna Rodriguez was accepted into Yale University. She attended East Taunton Elementary and Martin Middle School. Aiden Scully was accepted into Harvard University. Aiden attended Hopewell Elementary School and Friedman Middle School. Olivia Weber was also accepted into Harvard University. She attended Hopewell Elementary School and Parker Middle School. The entire school, school community is very proud of these students and their accomplishments. Today was the annual Destress Fest sponsored by the THS Access Center for Staff Members. They set up signs at every staff entrance reading "Heroes Work Here", along with festive holiday decorations in the main lobby. Coffee, music, food, and raffles were provided to the staff as well. Staff look forward to and enjoy this event every year. And a very special thank you to Florence Cannavale and Steph Littlefield. Mr. Mattos has emphasized attendance to the student body at the, as the first semester is coming to an end. Mr. Mattos reminds the students of importance in finishing the semester off strong. The first semester will end in less than a month. As for student council, we are preparing a Chipotle fundraiser to take place next week. Students and staff can use online ordering to support our school and eat a delicious burrito. At our meeting today, we also proposed our About Me slideshow ideas. Although students can't learn about each other face to face at the time, we have hopes that students will make a slide with a, with a little about themselves to get to know their peers better. That will complete my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Anselyn. Any questions? Chair will entertain a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. On the motion, Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll.
Ms. Darty.
Yes.
Mr. Palowski.
Yes.
Mr. Fiori.
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida.
Yes.
Mr. DeMello.
Yes.
And Mr. Souza.
Yes. We are at D, Public Input, and I will read the notification. Anyone that would like to provide public input via the telephone, 508-821-1221. The number should be flashing on your screen or, or on your screen permanently, down at the bottom somewhere. But 508-821-1221, and let me read our disclaimer. Wednesday, January 6, 2021, pursuant to Governor Baker's 20, excuse me, March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Section 30A18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public meeting of the Taunton School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No impressive attendance of the public, members of the public will be permitted. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this public meeting will be held remotely with no physical meeting location. Those seeking to provide public input should do so using the methods I'm going to state below. The meeting will be aired live on the Taunton Educational Network Comcast 9 and Verizon Number 23 in Taunton. The meeting is also viewed via livestream at the THS TV Studio Castus TV account. A recording of the meeting we made available at the aforementioned THS TV Studio Castus account website, as well as the Taunton Educational Network YouTube channel, youtube, youtube, at youtube.com, and you're looking for THS TV Studio. Is also, this meeting will also be rebroadcast multiple times on the Taunton Educational Cable Network. Public input via phone during the meeting, 508-821-1221. Leave a message, and please, you must state your name and your address for the record, so we know that it's a live call. And before the meeting, there's also a way for public input via email, and that goes to Mrs. Devine. And I know right now I have one public input for, for email, and that's public input via email prior to the start of the meeting at wdevine@tauntonschools.org. Use the email subject line "Public Import" and always include your name and address for the public record. This meeting will be recorded and posted on the Taunton Public Schools website, www.tautonschools.org. So I'm going to start, Ms. Monahan, do we have any live public input?
As of right now, we do not.
Okay, I'm going to go, so if anybody comes on, I'll be back to you, Mr. Barata. You are, I'm hearing your email reader.
Yes, we received one electronic communication. This is from Melissa Jakes, a grade five and six, substantially separate teacher from Friedman Middle School. Dear Taunton School Committee members, I hope this email finds you well as we enter 2021. While I enjoyed spending time off, it did bring about much anxiety, fear, and anger as January 4th loomed closer and closer. You see, I am a high-needs teacher. I've been employed with Taunton Public Schools since 2010 and in my position since 2014. While many shy away from such a position, it is truly my dream job. This year has been like nothing I could have ever imagined in my 20-year career. The week of January 4th is just another layer of nothing I could have ever imagined. I am angered and saddened that yet again, my high-needs students and colleagues are being put on the front lines for in-person learning while the remaining cohorts are remote. Based on parent disclosures, 33% of my high-needs caseload will be out of school on January 4th pending their, pending their COVID testing results. I am so thankful that parents have disclosed this to me. I'm extremely blessed for a wonderful group of parents this year. Yet I am fearful for my colleagues throughout the district that don't have similar parent support. I'm fearful that within the next two weeks, I'll see more COVID letters pop up in my inbox saying more TPS members have tested positive. I am fearful that one of those letters will be me. So many people didn't adhere to the health safety guidelines and spent the holidays with extended family. We turn on the news and that's all we see, the amount of cases spiking, the COVID mutation, how many are testing positive, et cetera. However, Taunton Public Schools is continuing to conduct in-person learning with the most vulnerable students. What message is this sending to everyone? Are high-needs staff and students not as vulnerable as others? Are we as staff and students not as valued as the rest of our TPS family? Just like yourselves, I am also a member of MASK, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. I understand the triumphs and challenges of being on a school committee. It is like a position, it is a position like no other. As a school committee member, teacher, wife, mother, and daughter, I am imploring you to hold the high-needs cohort to the same standards as other cohorts and transition to remote learning. It would be a greatest gift you could give us. Thank you for your time and consideration. Again, Melissa, Melissa Jakes, grade five and six, Special Education Teacher at Friedman Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Barata. Ms. Monahan, do we have anybody live for public input?
We do not.
Thank you. At this time, that was probably two or three minutes that it took Mr. Barata to read that. So that was, that's a significant amount of time insufficient for public input. I am going to call public input at, to close as of right now. And I'm going to move on to E, and it's Taunton Public Schools Social Justice Professional Development Series 2021, excuse me, 2020, 2021 series. And before I turn it over to the superintendent, I'd just like to welcome Dr. Butts, Mrs. Palowski, which is always a pleasure. And, oh, Becky, Becky Coet. Did I miss anybody? It's tough to see as, and that goes out of my eyes, I think they're playing tricks on me. All right, I think that's it. So all, welcome all. Good to see you, although it's video, one of these years I'll be able to see you actually in person. Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. So I just want to take this opportunity, one, to welcome everyone back and wish everyone a happy new year. Today was a great day for Taunton Public Schools. We continued our monthly series of professional development, which you, which we are offering to all TPS staff, educators, and support staff. educators, and support staff as well. I believe we had nearly 800 attendees on our webinar today, and that's a great credit to the tremendous amount of work in planning that is being done by the Social Justice Professional Development Committee, which is made up by some of the members that you see joining me this evening. So again, the first session last month, we focused on the four domains of social justice. Today, we took a deep dive into implicit bias. Next week, we will analyze data with respect to implicit bias. And then February, in honor of Black History Month, we will have a panel discussion, and then we'll also have a guest speaker. And again, I want to encourage school committee members, if you have opportunities, if your schedule allows you to attend, I think you would find this professional development to be very meaningful. As I can't recall the last time as a district, we've offered blanket PD to all our employees. And based on the feedback and the comments that we're receiving, um, I'm very excited about the direction we're going. And it's also exciting to see other districts looking at time and trying to model our work with our staff. So I can't, I can't take credit for this. This is the work of the committee and the work of the people who are passionate about making sure that we are doing everything possible to improve the outcomes and the experiences of our students and our staff in the Taunton Public Schools. So with that, I'll hand things over to Mr. Barata. Mr. Barata, the ball is on your call.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral, and thank you, everybody, and Happy New Year as well. Uh, Mr. Jakes, we could begin the slide presentation? I know in previous school committee meetings, we provided you, Superintendent, I provided you with, uh, basically itinerary, a map of the offerings that were going to take place in the district throughout this year. What I've included or what has been included in this week's packet is a little bit more in-depth in terms of our purpose, which really roll out our three-year plan, looking at, uh, equity in the district. So first and foremost, I'd like to acknowledge those members of our working group. Besides the superintendent, myself, we have Carolyn Blinow, our Technology Director, Dr. Cheryl Butts, who's with us this evening, Human Resources, right, Human Resources Director, Becky Coet, our PK through seven Humanities Curriculum Coordinator, Kristen Keenan, our Assistant Principal of the High School, Delila Mendoza, our EL Director, English Language Learner Director, Elizabeth Palowski, who's with us this evening, our pre-K through seven Curriculum Science Coordinator, and Dr. Tina Rogers, our pre-K through seven Math Coordinator. And I'd like to, as Mr. Cabral's often said, uh, we have a great team in Taunton, and this work is all based upon the efforts of many, of many, of very valuable work. So on the second slide, if we could begin the, uh...
Yep, hold on, I'm just trying to load it up now. It was just sent to me.
I guess I could fill some time now, correct? A little bit?
All set, Chris.
Thank you, Steve. Superintendent Cabral mentioned, I, I think this is probably perhaps the first time we're doing district-wide continuous professional development, where we're able to engage everyone across the district, every member in the district, so that we can positively impact our students' experiences and connect better with our families. And that's basically what we're trying to do. Form better connections with our students and families to improve the engagement instructional experiences for all of our students. So we're going to provide our instructors, administrators, and support staff with the knowledge, tools, and resources to address matters of explicit or implicit biases, prejudice, discrimination, promote a more inclusive learning environment in respect to the racial, cultural, and human differences, so that everyone is respected and valued. Next slide, Steve. So we hear the term a lot of what is social justice, right? And first and foremost, social justice or addressing social justice in Taunton is not new. It is not, uh, as some might think, it's just a fad, and it's a current event. This has actually been ongoing work within Taunton Public Schools. And I'm sure that as school committee members, or perhaps as parents of students in the district, you've heard about this work, but I don't think we've done a good enough job articulating what is really taking place in the district for our families in the community. So this isn't new work we've done, it's ongoing work. And as I turn over the presentation to Ms. Coet and Ms. Butts and Ms. Palowski, you're going to hear evidence of that, that this is really ongoing work. And throughout this year, we're going to come together on a monthly basis to build awareness, to build capacity, so better address our needs of our communities. And we believe that by building this awareness and capacity, um, we're going to be better adept at you, uh, supporting our students and their needs and our student diverse population. Because as we know, our, our community has changed and continues to change, and we need to meet their needs. So moving forward, we plan to create awareness, take action, assess our impact, and make positive changes throughout our school system and hopefully our community as well. And on the next slide, you'll see that, uh, Taunton has a three-year plan. Again, this isn't strictly defined year by year. Like any great work and hard work, there's always crossovers. So when I say from December to June, we're building awareness and capacity, well, we're also going to be taking steps of taking action. Although fully taking action will be next year, going back and assessing our work through September 22 to June 23 is when we're going to look at the impact of our work. Again, that's just as much as what our teachers do every day in a classroom. Building awareness and capacity instruction, taking action, delivering instruction, and then making assessments, then going back and looking at what worked, what didn't work, and make improvements. So this is ongoing work, um, as I stated before. And our outcomes for this year, as we mentioned, I said probably three times already, increased awareness, personal institutional biases and their impact on our students, family, and staff, enhancing our understanding of diversity-related issues and their significance throughout the system. And three, staff will be acquired, uh, will have acquired anti-bias educational tools, strategies, and resources. So now we're actually going to transition now to the next slide. We're actually going to look at, uh, a little bit more in detail and speak to it when we bring in our guest speakers here about what has gone on and what is going to foreshadow events coming in. So like I turn it over now to Becky, Ms. Becky Coet, our pre-K through seven Humanities and Reading Coordinator in Title I, not to mention she also oversees Title I, and talks a little bit, our first, uh, presentation, which took place on December 2nd. So, Ms. Coet?
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for having me. Happy New Year. It's good to see all your faces. So on December 2nd, just like Chris, um, talked about, we, we had an introductory session. And like he said, we've been doing this work. I've personally been doing this work for the past 10 years in the district. So for some people, this was new. For other people, it was a refresher, and it was a good spot to just, um, all get on the same page and hear the same message. So Teaching Tolerance, which is a great, um, community-based organization, has social justice standards, and so with their standards and their domains of identity, diversity, justice, and action, along with Superintendent Cabral's objectives for this PD series, teachers gained an understanding of those domains, but then also self-reflected on where they fell in those domains. So Steve, if you don't mind just skipping to slide 10 for a second? Yep, this slide. So it's hard to see here, but you can see that there's multiple, um, there's multiple statements or ways in which teachers can work on themselves in the area of identity, right? Or understand their students or their colleagues in the area of diversity, justice, and action. And so they have, they had time to acknowledge where they are on a continuum of that certain statement or domain. And then they're going to be looking out into the future all the way till June 21st, 2021, to see how they grow within that standard or that objective. So they did some of that work on December 2nd. They followed through with some of, more of that thinking, um, today. And so Elizabeth's going to share a little bit of, with you what we did today. And Steve, thanks. You can go back to that other slide.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm really happy to be here to share what we've been doing, um, the last couple of months, but also, as Becky said, for the last, for last several years in the district. We began, as Becky said, on focusing on the four domains, particularly the first three, uh, domains of social justice, uh, and just with an overview, uh, in December. So we began to define the terms of identity, diversity, uh, justice, and eventually, hopefully, action. Today, we really started within to examine ourselves, uh, to better understand how aspects of our identity could perhaps help us see the world in a particular way, and that, and these different, the way that our identity sort of harmonizes, all the different aspects, could, uh, it make us see the world differently and treat others differently? My particular focus for this today and for other, for other, um, workshops we've done in the past with the Athletics Department and through the PD series was, uh, the biological basis of this. Human beings create patterns, and the brain is wired to create patterns, and these patterns come through in, as biases. So if we are able to access and understand the biases that we currently have, because of how we raised in the, in what we read and what we see, we are better able to reflect upon these and then ensure that our intent matches our impact when we interact with students, colleagues, and friends. And I'll pass this along to, uh, Dr. Butts.
Thanks, Liz. Can everybody hear me? Thank you. Happy New Year, everybody. Good to see everybody. What I'm going to speak to is our February 3rd PD with our guest speaker, Professor Gannon. Professor Gannon is a professor of history at Grandview University in Iowa, whose training and research centers around critical and inclusive pedagogy, race, history, and social justice. He has also made an appearance on the Oscar-nominated documentary on Netflix called The Thirteenth, which, if you haven't seen it, I strongly suggest you look at it. It's a very powerful documentary. He's a speaker and consultant, and we're thrilled that he has partnered with TPS to help us with our PD in social justice. We've had Dr. Gannon, uh, provide PD over the summer for our admin retreat, and that was very well received. It actually left us wanting for more. And so on the 13th, he, uh, sorry, February 30th, he's going to present to hopefully another almost 800 attendees, and hopefully that will go very well. I do want to say that our initiatives on diversity, equity, and inclusion has been very well-received feedback from today and from the prior session we had. And I want to share with you that the success of these initiatives are now being seen in the diversity of the staff that we're hiring. And, uh, kudos to our admin people, our administrators. It means that they're listening to what's being said, that they're becoming aware, they're casting a wider net, and we're actually diversifying staff. I'm really proud of TPS and the commitment they have made to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I'm really very proud to be part of this team, uh, with, um, the Curriculum Girls and with Superintendent Cabral here in TPS. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Becky. Thank you, uh, Cheryl. So I'll, I'll back up a little bit and talk about what's going to take place next week with implicit bias and, and a data dive. And what we're going to look at is how do we actually look at data? Because data is the result of whatever actions took place. And, and I actually want to step back a little bit further because just like we present these offerings to our staff, everyone is at a continuum of a point of learning, right? And just like our great teachers always develop lessons of entry points of where the students are at to let them be able to engage the material, we're providing professional development in the same manner. And we also understand that we have, and looking at our past records of those faculty members who've participated in the professional development offerings that Elizabeth and Becky and Delila Mendoza have offered, we also realize some staff haven't, right? So we have some staff members who might be ready for this, some staff members who might be directly opposed to this type of information. And that's why I use somewhat neutral language of really what we're talking about here is metacognition, thinking about thinking. You know, how do we think and why do we think? And I think today's presentation about how our brains, as from, you know, birth to five, those pathways are pretty much set. And some of the decisions that we make is a result of us trying to quickly respond to situations and categorize. And we all, well, I would say this, that I, in my decision-making, very oftentimes refer back to when I was a child, when I was a teacher, when I was an assistant principal. And when I do that, right, sometimes I don't, uh, understand or appreciate where someone else is coming from, because it's just a quick response for me, because I want to get through something, I want to come up with some result. So next week, when we look at data, we're going to actually look at the outcomes of decisions made, good, bad, and different, and really come down and ask why? What data are we looking at? Why is it important? Why did we decide, or why did certain, uh, decisions made? And eventually, what we can actually do, and we should be doing, is looking at our policies and saying, what type of policies, when they were made, and we revised them? What was the intent of those policies, and what might be the positive aspects of it, or perhaps consequences for certain types of individuals as a result of those? Again, it's not an overhaul of a system. It's more or less looking at where we are and how can we better address the needs of our students and our families. So we're going to also look at February 24th. We're going to actually have a student panel discussion. If Cheryl, if you could weigh in for a few minutes and, and speak to that?
Sure, Chris. Um, in the past, Becky and I have worked with students, and we've had much success with the students on the panels that we've put together. We realized that if we feed them pizza, they will come. However, we're going to have to become a little more creative during these Zoom sessions. We learn from the students just as much as they learn from us. And today, today's presentation and PD featured a little glimpse of what, uh, Becky worked on during Cultural Lenses Week last year, last spring. And I will, I know we'll get to the debrief session later, but that was brought up about how powerful it is to hear from our students. So I'm working with a few people at the high school. Today, I had a teacher offer to help at the middle school to get a few students and device, uh, a, sorry, a diverse student body to share with us what their real world experiences have been in the world, in school, in their personal life. And so we're working towards that, and we're, we're very excited. The kids are also excited. It's still in the early stages, but we will be ready for February 24th.
Thank you, Cheryl. Uh, so we go from February 24th, we actually hear from our students, uh, March 3rd and 17th, uh, looking at our schools themselves and identify figures, groups, and events relevant to history and the social justice around the world, recognizing stereotypes and such. April 7th, adult panel discussion through our eyes, where we'll be looking for, uh, some of our staff members to speak about their experiences, um, which are very powerful. And we had one, we had a teacher today, um, who actually spoke from her perspective. And I'm drawing a, may, blip of a name. Someone wants to come up with a name?
Maureen Farias.
There he is, Maureen Farias, who presented her perspective and writings and such, and it was a powerful breakout session. And the next slide, Steve? Teaching Towage, Why It Matters, we're going to be looking at a guest speaker for, for that, uh, so that work is still to be determined. And the last, uh, round out of the year would be a self-assessment and reflection, which again is really important as to what was successful, what wasn't, what are our next steps? And if I could go back to the team that's with me tonight, as they hosted breakout sessions for our staff, maybe they could give a little snippet of, of how staff re-engaged them after school, very close to the end of school, and maybe had some discussions. So if I could go to Elizabeth, if you could maybe, uh, speak to what took place in your breakout, and then to Becky, and then to Cheryl?
Uh, it was, it was great. Uh, there were, um, a couple dozen teachers that, uh, came and, uh, we just, they wanted to just get, uh, depth. It's, it was like a whole continuum. I'll say it like that. Some teachers are really hungry for definitions and understanding because they want to do the right thing. Some really wanted to share their stories, where they perhaps may have, um, displayed some implicit bias and, um, want and wanted to know what to do to rectify it or what not to do next time. And then there were others who just wanted to share their stories of, um, struggling with, with teachers or family or et cetera, who have been biased towards them. So really, it's a wonderful place for people to share and affirm one another and, uh, learn to go forward and, and, and be better. Cheryl?
Thanks, Liz. Um, when we debriefed, it was, it was actually a really good idea. After people partake in something as powerful and emotional as this on such a sensitive topic, we realized that it's important that they have some way to, um, to, 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 to share that load and to get it off their chest. It was wonderful. People were sharing their own experiences today. People were impressed by that clip with the students that we used, Becky, in, can't wait for more. They can't wait for more, and to get the students involved, the students were key. We talked about the students and, and how they could get them involved. We also talked about other creative ways in which we could bring awareness to people, uh, not just the educators, but, but to other staff members. not just the educators, but to other staff members. We talked a little bit about book clubs, maybe looking at movies and having discussions, book studies, which is a little different from book clubs. So we're gonna, we're actually gonna network and keep in touch and bounce things off. So this actually sparked an interest in others who want to get involved and want to know how they could spread the word. So I think this is great. We're doing great things. Becky?
Thanks. I didn't hold a debrief session because I had a separate meeting, but I did get multiple emails over and over and over again today of people sharing their stories, sharing their experiences, but also like sharing a book that, you know, I should read or something else that they saw. So I think people were really moved and their comments were very positive. I do think the debrief sessions are really important. And I heard Maureen Farias hit it out of the park that she was amazing during her session too today. And I think that we, all the feedback that we do get, whether positive or negative, with constructive feedback, we can certainly make these sessions even better for everyone on that continuum.
Thank you. It's important to know that as Becky mentioned, she was actually attending another meeting. And just so the committee and the public is aware, there's a lot of work taking place in this district. We have this professional development series for all our adult community taking place. We have Taunton High School Social Justice Committee work taking place. We have at East Taunton, who partly, I wouldn't say they're running professional development series, but their faculty is addressing these issues. And then you also have our Social Justice Community Input Team, which is going to be kicking off next week and such. So throughout the district, this work is taking place. Again, this isn't anything new for Taunton. It's been ongoing work. And Steve, if we could slide, go to maybe the last slide that I have there with a teacher checklist. Okay, so like anything, like all the work we do and all the assessments that are done with DESI, as I mentioned previously, we go through a tiered monitoring progress of every district does in the Commonwealth of where you are in certain categories. And for tiered monitoring, they look at civil rights and special education. And obviously civil rights is regardless of any standing of a child, whatever we consider them subgroups or not. Part of that work has to look at curriculum and curriculum bias. Now, we are well aware because members of the committee, current and past, have all participated in or will participate in the curriculum revision process. And you know that during that community input team process, as you review materials, we have baked in our policies and our practices, the viewing of those materials for anti-bias or anti-discriminatory type of readings or information, basically more inclusive materials. What the state wants us to do, which our professional development really has to do is look into the classroom and what is actually going on with the teacher. So we adopt the reading series, say wonders and studies, correct? It went through all the process. We looked at ed reports, DESI, you name it, our own the ground. Some school commanders reviewed the materials, excellent reviews, you're on board. But we know that our teachers don't teach just by the book. And they are in charge of the academic content beyond or how they instruct within the classroom. And our teachers go beyond some of the resources we have. And what DESI would like us to do, what we should be doing is not prohibiting what teachers actually bring in, but actually are they presenting a balanced presentation of the materials? And that's the point. So when you hear the word bias, right away, some people tend to get on their heels like, what do you mean? That's a negativity. No, it's saying, are we presenting a balanced representation of whatever content you're delivering? And we're developing this checklist, which is actually an exemplar that DESI provided us. And that's why it's a draft, because we're going to tauntenize it as to what does that mean to us? Looking at the, you know, what do you see as making lasting impressions? And I'm not going to reach one, but stereotypes, imbalance and selectivity, unreality. So really looking at the materials that teachers themselves bring in that goes beyond what our normal curriculum revision process oversees. Again, it's really looking at the interaction between the teachers and the students, looking at that connectivity and how we can best support our students' learning. So that actually concludes our presentation. If you have any questions or comments, we gladly take them now, please.
Mr. Souza, you muted?
I guess it would help if I do that. I'm sorry. I just saw him by the, if I'm out of order, please forgive me. Mr. Palowski, Ms. Doherty, Mr. DeMello, in that order.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Dr. Butts, Ms. Coet, Mrs. Palowski, thank you very much for the presentation. And also thank you. I was lucky enough to join the session this morning, so I was very happy to take part in that. It was very eye-opening. It's very eye-opening to know that like the implicit bias that we're by definition not aware of, we're projecting things onto other people from what's inside our head onto them and not necessarily what they're actually putting out there and what they want to see. And it's one thing to think about doing that to other adults in, you know, my daily life, but to imagine doing that to children, I think that was, that's really something to reflect on. And I really appreciated being able to see the children that were behind the curtain, speaking and talking about themselves and you couldn't see them. And then they come through. So I thought it was, you know, a very brave thing for those kids to do. It was really cool. So I'm glad all the staff of Taunton Public Schools were able to experience that today. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. Ms. Doherty.
Thank you very much, Mr. Souza. I, first of all, really appreciate the work that you are, y'all are doing on behalf of social justice across the district. And I was interested to hear Mr. Barata say that, and I guess I knew it, that this is ongoing work. Sometimes the kind of work that teachers do is just embedded in their approach, their savvy, their perspective, their awareness. And we don't chalk, put it down on a checklist and say that they're doing it. So it would be, and you listed a really a lengthy list, and I'm sure there's more activity that's going on in addition to these professional development programs across the district. It would be at some point in time, at your leisure, Mr. Barata, some leisure, to create a report for us that describes what's going on, not in, not in exhaustive detail, but so that we're aware of what's happening across the district in the event that those questions are put to us. So two questions. One is, what is the source of this curriculum? Is this a homegrown, designed by you and others uniquely for the Taunton Public Schools? Is it extrapolated from some work that's going ongoing? So where does this, it's so comprehensive and obviously stretched out over the rest of the school year. So I'm just interested in where it comes from and how you put pen to paper in this regard.
Chris, do you mind if I start on this one? I'll start on this one, then I'm going to again hand it off to Mr. Barata and the team. Because it really was starting with the outline. So I worked on putting together the outline and met with the team, with the long Mr. Barata, and then the team went to work. Every person that Mr. Barata mentioned that's working on the Social Justice Professional Development Committee, they have expertise in those different areas or those different topics. They're also involved in networks or they've led professional development in all the different topics that we want to, that we want to touch. So based on my work with the urban superintendents, based on my work on committees I serve on at the state level, we put together the outline, had a vision meeting or visioning meeting, and then they're running with it and really doing some outstanding work. So I'll let Chris and the team talk about where they're pulling these materials from. But I think you're going to notice that a lot of it is work that they've done, work that they've researched, or they're pulling from seminars or workshops that they've attended. I'll let them speak for themselves.
I'll just, just overarching speaking, as I mentioned previously, a lot of this work, most of the work is never done in isolation. Although sometimes when we roll something out, some people say, what's a new initiative? It's separate from something else. Well, when you look work with the SEL, Social Emotional Learning Community Input Team, they talk about inclusiveness and equity. When we went through the transformative change of becoming an inclusionary district with, you know, inclusion classrooms, that's equity, right? Equity, access to our fine educators with high-quality curriculum materials. So really, I am thankful and blessed to be working with the colleagues, some of which are with us tonight that I mentioned even earlier before, of people who not only are passionate about this work, but are highly intelligent, who are resourceful, and putting out those tentacles and pulling this information together. So I'll look at, I'll go alphabetically, we'll just Cheryl Butts, then Becky Coet, and then Elizabeth, and then we'll go back to the group.
Alphabetical, so I'm it. What I will say is this work is, is unique to us. This was a team effort. I had the pleasure of working with Becky and Liz on prior workshops on implicit bias. A lot of today's work was drawn on previous work that we did, we created together. And as Chris said, other workshops or professional development seminars that we attended and we got ideas from. I will say a lot of credit will go to Becky because she's been doing this a lot longer than I have. I've been involved for the last seven years, long before the George Floyd instance. So what, what we realized here is that we had this, we had this 15 years ago, from what I heard today in our debrief group, somebody was remembering the work that went on 15 years ago. So the work that we're doing, we continue to build on. In this kind of work, we have to network. We're continually getting PD for ourselves. In some of the other forums that I've attended and participated as a panelist, I was able to meet and network with Professor Gannon. And I must say, you know, you meet a lot of impressive people and experts in various fields, and we're able to bring that back. When they see the passion that we have and how committed we are, and we're all in this for education and the kids, they're always willing to help us. So with that, A, B, C, Coet, you're next.
Thanks. And Carol, Mrs. Doherty, just like we talked about earlier, good teachers pull from various, you know, places, right? So the kids are what inspired this. And when you watch the videos and we can send you the links, the kids standing behind a screen telling people what they wish they, other people would see in them before they actually see them visually was so powerful that we knew we had to use that. And Teaching Tolerance, which is the organization I spoke of, they have the social justice domains, which Delilah Mendoza is utilizing with her newcomer teachers, with her English learner ESL teachers. So all of those pieces are already embedded into what we do as a district. And so we wanted to continue to bring those in. And lastly, I can't say enough about Elizabeth's brain. So she knows a lot about the brain itself. So I'll let her finish and tell you where she got her things, but I'm pretty sure she already knew them from school, so.
Thank you. But I want to reiterate what Becky said is that good teachers have a framework and then we pull, 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 pull. So that's what a lot of this is, is we have a general framework. But yeah, this is the, this is the, you listen to the students and you know that this is necessary. But yeah, a lot of this is from my background, what my portions have been, has been my background from undergraduate school and in neuroscience. And then now in my current graduate work, so much of it is embedded in social justice and in equity and pulling from those seminal articles and those great thinkers to give value, like scholarly value to what we see anecdotally has really helped us as well.
I also want to add that we asked six or seven other people with varying identities that are not mine, Portuguese woman leader in the district. You know, I called somebody from an LGBTQ community and asked him to look at the presentation and then say, what do you think? Because that's really important. I don't want to offend somebody using a presentation that I've done or that we've done that hasn't been brought to other lenses. And that's really what's important about this work.
Part of the greatness of this work is follow the mantra of travel light, borrow heavy. Because we have such talented people in the district that we actually put out the call and they respond. Carolyn Blenau, with her teaching and experience in the urban settings as a leader, and a former Taunton High School student, brings to this group a tremendous perspective. Same with Kristen Keenan, who's been employed by the district a number of years, very much contributing. We mentioned Delilah Mendoza, one of the fiercest advocates for our English language learners phenomenon. Dr. Tina Rogers, who completed her dissertation regarding not only conducting an equity audit of a large scale or similar district, but also a pint, well, a fierce advocate about culturally responsive teaching. So when you have great people right down into the classrooms and out in the buildings, security guards, cafeteria staff, where really all they need to be is they ask and invited. And I think that's what's great about Superintendent Cabral's idea about let's do something big and swing for the fences and really take advantage of this Wednesday time where we can bring everybody in. Because the more we do that, the more we percolate this type of synergy. And like everything else, we do better in Taunton when our stuff is organic versus someone just slapping something down on us because we will not respond to that.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mr. Susan, Mr. Chairman. So just a quick comment and observation for the public at home. At the university level, at Bridgewater State where I work, we have a whole institute called the Martin Richard Institute for Social Justice, led by Dr. Mary Grant. So the dedication of these folks in front of us today and those not in front of us on the Professional Development Committee and everyone involved, I commend very highly because it's above and beyond their normal day of work. Given the fact that we have a whole institute and another office called the Office of Institution Diversity that tends to these matters, okay, on a daily basis. So thank you so much for all your work, all your dedication. And as someone mentioned, it's a collaboration between the educator and the classroom and these folks leading us and of course our superintendent. So going forward, this is definitely the footprint that the Taunton Public Schools is setting for the future generations. Because as Dr. Butts mentioned, this just wasn't just, didn't happen in May of this year. This has been going on for many, many years and will continue to go on in the legacy of Taunton Public Schools. So thank you so much for all your dedication and your great work to all those.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Appreciate the comments. And I'll just close with thanking everyone that serves on this committee and keep up the good work. And it's a long-term process. It just keeps getting better. Oh, Superintendent Cabral.
I just have two quick comments or mostly two observations. One, it's, it's great to hear the continuous reference to kids, to our students. You know, when we talk about social justice, and that's really the focus, it's our students. So I'm very proud of that. And more so, I'm more so proud of the fact that we are empowering people in the district. That it's, that not only are district coordinators, as Mr. DeMello mentioned, doing this, in addition to their day jobs, we're also empowering teachers who are stepping up and asking for more and willing to lead. So it's, again, it's, it's gone over better than I expected. And I really look forward to continuing this work with this dynamic group. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barata, and thank you, team. Team, you're welcome, you're welcome to stay on, but I know this rest of it will probably boy you to tears. So have a good rest of your night. And right now I'll go to F Superintendent's Report, Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. So in your packet, you have my latest superintendent's report that focuses on two items. The first item that I want to talk to, to you about or give you information on, and again, I want to preface by saying we have not made a decision, but I do want to make you aware that any decision that is made will be made as a group or the information we've brought to you so that we can make a collaborative decision. So I have been in contact with folks, representatives at the DESI level, Department of Elementary and Education. I've also been in contact with, I've been in conversation with local state officials regarding pool testing. Pool testing for COVID-19, in particular with our students. And I do have a couple of graphs in my superintendent's report to give you an idea of what pool testing is. So if you look at the third page of my super's report, you'll see with pool testing, what they, what we do, or what they would do is take a swab from a classroom of students, put it in one vial and run a test. If the vial comes back negative, then that means no one in the classroom is positive or has COVID-19. So when they test the next class, if they swap, if the test comes back positive, then with the pool, they would do an individual test of each swab to specifically identify which student or which swab was COVID-19 positive. So the benefits of this is that you are able in a relatively short amount of time, especially in the hybrid model, to identify students in cohort B and cohort A who may be positive with COVID-19 and keep them out of school to ensure or to negate the possible spread of COVID-19. So these are ongoing conversations that I will continue to have with my urban superintendent's network as well as officials from the Department of Elementary and Second Education and also with our elected state officials. I do want to be very transparent that there are three tests being offered right now, two at no cost. The two at no cost is the pooled PCR test that is being offered by the Broad Institute. And the Ginkgo Bioworks are offering And the Ginkgo Bioworks are offering free pool testing. However, what what is not beneficial from this free testing is that they are not going to provide you with the individual student information that you would need in order to keep students out or in order to keep students who are in person safe. The, what I believe in talking with our state officials, as well as DESI and my colleagues in the Urbans Network, the, the program that I believe is most advantageous to school systems, however, it is the most costly to school systems, is what Miramis is offering, where they provide the pool testing and then they'll go, they'll drill down even further to do the individual testing. However, that's at a cost of about fifteen to thirteen dollars per student per week. So it is very costly. But there is work being done at the state level to help minimize the cost. And we also don't know what will take place with the COVID funds that we should be receiving in this next stimulus bill. So I'll continue to keep the group updated so that we can make an informed decision and determine whether this is something that we want to enter. There also is a management piece, you know, at with 5,000 kids roughly attending in person. Those are 5,000 samples that we need to collect, secure and properly, you know, transport to be tested. So there are a lot of moving parts, a lot of information. I do have a follow up call, I believe, plans for the state official on Monday. And as I learn more information, I will pass it along to the group. And if there is some relief with funding in manage, management and operations, then obviously we'll look into that as well. So this is just something to make you aware in our efforts to try to maintain the hybrid model that we currently have in place and operate in a safe and efficient manner. The second piece in my superintendent's report was just to make you aware that we secured two grants. So Mr. Barata worked to secure a hundred and $6,000 grant to provide secondary students in our middle schools and high school with virtual online support. So we're very proud of Mr. Barata's work to secure that grant. And I'm also very proud to announce that Dr. Linda Wa applied for a $10,000 grant to assess the social emotional needs of our students, which is a great opportunity, especially during COVID and during the lockdown, to see where our students are at and then be able to provide direct supports to students who need it. So that concludes my report. I assume there'll be many questions, so please fire away.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. I see Mr. Polowski and Mr. Doherty, were you up? Yes, okay. So I got Mr. Polowski, Ms. Doherty and Mr. DeMello. So, Mr. Polowski, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Through you to Mr. Cabral. So the, the pooled testing, if we were to employ that, what what would you actually do with that testing? Like, what would be, what would be the logistics around it? So you, you collect samples and then you get results in 24 hours. What's the, what's the decision making process? What are we using it for?
Yeah, the way the Miramis testing works, Mr. Polowski, and it's been piloted in several school districts, I believe Wellesley is actually using it. The way it works is cohort A attends in person on Monday. The students receive a kit that they take home and they provide a saliva sample in a vial. Package, bring it in the next day, it's collected, tested. If a student is positive, they are contacted and they are told to quarantine until they no longer have the symptoms and then they can return in person, but they would then attend remotely. Cohort B attends on Thursday, the same process is followed. Again, it's to keep students who are sick out of our schools so that they can recover safely and to mitigate the potential spread. So that's the way, that's the way it would work. And again, there's a logistical piece and management and operations piece when you're dealing with a district aside, being, being a midsize urban, I mean, collecting 5,000 samples and knowing that we are already strapped for manpower, that would be a logistic, logistical issue we would have to work out, which would be an additional cost, because I can't imagine our nurses, our principals, our assistant principals being able to manage this without some additional support, which again would be, would require funding.
Okay, okay. And then I guess one, one follow up question. So if that's the process and understood, it would definitely be a logistical challenge to work out. What happens if a student is on, doesn't return the test or is unable, or do you then presume that they have a positive test? Like, how does the logic work on that?
Yeah, those are the logistical issues that we need to continue working on. And I, I need to learn from other communities that have piloted this.
Okay.
We not, I mean, those are exactly my concerns. If somebody, somebody forgets their sample at home. No, yeah, those are the type of things when you're dealing with 5,000 kids that could be troublesome. And I don't want to negatively impact the student and whether it's religious, whether it's, you know, medical, personal beliefs. We need to tread lightly, but also trying to be respectful that we're trying to operate in the safest conditions possible.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Polowski. Ms. Doherty.
So I, excuse me, I have a comment and some information, comment on the, the testing and some information on the grants. So let me start with the grants because that's quick and rosy. Sometime ago, in the late summer, we, I added earmarks for the city of Taunton, both for the elderly and for the school department with information in the instance of the school department for Mr. Cabral. So we put forward a request for an earmark of $1.2 million for a reading program. Mr. Cabral would have to explain what that is particularly, and we received $300,000 in earmark funds under the Economic Development Bill, which we just passed in the wee hours of the morning. So the logistics of getting, squeezing that money out of the state and bringing it to the district have yet to be worked out, but that was good and happy news. So whatever, at your leisure, Mr. Cabral, you can explain what it is you're going to use that, that money for. Clearly, the state agreed to that. So I was glad that that stayed in. So to the question of testing, I'm not, I, I'm not going to pretend that I fully understand, although I've read like everyone else about all of this kind of testing thing. So I guess the question is, money aside, what are the circumstances that would exist in the district that would precipitate quick action in regard to testing, testing our, our children? I noted on the front page of the Gazette this morning that Taunton had three COVID deaths last week, that our numbers have risen significantly in terms of positive cases in a week's time by 285 individuals. I heard the letter from Melissa Jakes in regard to her concerns about cohort C. So what are the, what's the confluence of events that would occur that would push us into some kind of a testing mode? If you can answer that question. Thank you, Mr. Susan.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it will depend on, again, it's, it's a cost. And I need to make sure that if we do enter into this, knowing that it's going to be costly, I want to make sure that if we do, that we can manage it correctly from the logistical point of view. So not only is it just $15 per student per week, there's also cost for setup. There's also costs for retesting and there's also going to be costs for managing this operation on a large scale in 12 schools to be able to get this done correctly. So it's really going to, so it really comes down to understanding the logistics and in talking with the individuals at the state level that I've spoken with, we have time. We have pretty much the month of January into February before we need to make a decision or make a commitment. So we do have time. And in my opinion, if we were going to enter this, Miramis makes the most sense. The other two are great as far as pilots go, but there's no, there's no promise of free testing beyond the windows that they're offering. And there's no promise of being able to drill down and really identify individual students, which would mean we'd have to quarantine an entire class. And I don't think that's beneficial to in-person learning. If one, if it's one positive and 24 kids or 14 kids have to quarantine. So it's really about understanding the logistics associated behind this and really making sure that we can identify funding without impacting our operational budget.
Just a comment on that, if I might, Mr. Susan. So if it is intentional, if we want to do the testing, then we can go find, find the resources to get that done. And lastly, I checked the dashboard on the website today and the last update was 12:18. I don't know if you have those numbers right at the top of your head in terms of the current, and I know you were concerned about the Christmas holidays and changes in the numbers of cases or not during that period of time. So updating the dashboard, if you've got the numbers, would be helpful. Thank you, Mr. Susan.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty, Mr. DeMello, and then Mrs. Almeida.
Can you answer the question?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Because of the holiday break, we did not update the dashboard, but the dashboard will be updated this Friday.
Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Chairman Susan. So just to put into a perspective Superintendent Cabral's concern about 5,000 tests weekly at the university, my other duty is to manage the COVID-19 testing center since travel is kind of not happening right now. So over two days, every Tuesday and Wednesday, we test between 1,400 and 1,500 students and faculty that want to get tested. We operate from nine to four. We have three to four check-in agents. Those are the folks that check you in, print the label, put it on the test tube, and we have a rotation of three nurse practitioners throughout the day. So if we're saying we want to test 2,500 students on cohort A and another 2,500 on cohort B, logistically, I don't know how we're going to handle this. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it. I am very much for doing it and every student should be tested, regardless of a pool, not pool, whatever we want to call it. But logistically speaking, that's what's happening at the university level. So once again, we test 14 to 1500 students weekly, two days, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and three to four check-in agents and three nurse practitioners on a rotating basis. Hope that's helpful to my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Appreciate the information. Let's see, Mrs. Almeida.
Thank you. When you figure that out, it's coming to like one and a half million dollars to do. So we're going to get a grant for over a million dollars to do testing?
My conversations with elected officials and again, DESI officials is there may be some relief to support this funding, this, this testing. And so again, that is, it always comes down to money. And but also, not only does it come down to money, it also comes down to being able to manage it correctly. And as Mr. DeMello mentioned, I mean, at the university, I think one benefit is that Mr. DeMello is working with young adults. I mean, we'd be working with preschool, kindergarten, all the way through 12. What would be a little different than the university level would be that we'd be relying on students to provide or families to provide the sample at home. As I mentioned earlier, the student would provide a saliva sample in a vial, cap it, bring it back into school in a package the next day that would be collected by, you know, a person that most likely have to be hired. So again, you've got a lot of moving parts in that piece, which could lend to samples being forgotten at home, which I already talked about, possibly being lost. So again, a lot of moving parts and conversation that I need to have with superintendents. And I don't believe Wellesley is the size of Taunton, but that's a conversation I want to have with their superintendent to learn how they were able to manage it, how they addressed students who forgot, students whose families didn't want to participate. You know, those are all the different things that we need to work out. So I want to make sure that you have the information and I don't want you to feel like I'm operating in the dock without involving the school board.
No, I understand that. But my, my, I have another question regarding, so am I understanding that all these files, do they have someone's name on the vial? Or it's just the vial from that classroom all goes together?
Yeah.
What was I missing there?
Yeah, each, so each sample, each sample would be for each particular student, then it's combined into one sample and then it's tested. So it would be identifiable.
So if you have 10 students, they're going to take those 10 students and put it all together. So how are you going to know which student is positive?
If the pool test comes in positive.
Yeah.
Then they test each sample individually. There'd be a second round of testing to drill down to who was positive in that pool. So there's three, six, nine, 12, there's 15 of us on the chat right now. We all contribute a sample that goes into one pool. That sample comes back negative. So that means somebody or one of the 15 are positive. Then the lab would then separate the pool to each individual sample that we all provided, run individual tests on all of us to see who was the positive case.
Okay, and what's the turnaround on the testing?
I was told, I believe, 24 to 48 hours is the turnaround after being submitted. I may be mistaken, but I was told it was relatively quick because you need to then identify the family for the following week.
So for one solid week, you could have someone who's contagious?
For the Tuesday, correct, because they don't forget, our students attend two days at a time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Mr. DeMello, then Ms. Doherty.
Just a quick follow up, if I may. With the Broad Institute at the university, our samples are collected at around 5:00, 5:30 in the afternoon. And we usually get a turnaround in less than 24 hours from the arrival at the Broad Institute in Cambridge. So let's say it's a 6:30 PM check-in, we'll get results most likely less than 12 hours, but not usually more than 24 hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Ms. Doherty.
Just an observation based on the conversation, thanks from, to my colleagues to edify me. I, I, I think that obviously the virus is a problem that needs to be solved and that if we see a decided uptick in the positive cases that are identified in our school, either among children or adults, then to me, it's, we, we would go to the state and find some resources to go to the department, wherever we would go to help to support that kind of testing if it is critical to the well-being. And that's been our total focus is what are we doing? What must we do in order to keep our children and staff safe? So it leads me to the second observation, and that is that we are currently in a, except for cohort C, and I'd have to have some explanation about why cohort C is in school and everybody else is remote. If you don't mind, Superintendent, but are we planning on, given the data, to keep a remote learning mode through next week or are our students going back hybrid?
Well, the plan was to be in remote for this week with our neediest learners of being cohort C, attending in person. As we learned during the remote phase and as you, many of you received communication from our high needs parents, we know that educating our high need students remotely is very challenging. And we know our most vulnerable learners learn best when they're in person. So that was the decision, the rationale behind bringing our high needs learners in because they are, as Mrs. Jakes mentioned, our most vulnerable learners. I agree with her there. I also want to reiterate too, that our high needs population, as many of you also learned from our parents, it's a very low number, less than 1,000 students. I want to say less than 500 students spread out over 12 schools. So in my conversations with the Board of Health, my conversations with Nurse Manager Meade Regan, in knowing that our neediest learners learn best, let's take for example, a student who's on the spectrum, a student who is in a life skills classroom, who's nonverbal. I mean, these are the students who, as Mrs. Jakes mentioned, are our neediest students. And I believe that our neediest students, being the low number that they were, would minimize or provide provide little spread, if any, in our schools. And I also appreciate what Mrs. Jakes mentioned too, as far as the cooperation of all our parents who've been exceptional with keeping kids home when they display symptoms, which is something that we have been echoing since the start of this pandemic. So I want to give kudos to all our parents and kudos to our high needs teachers. And we also know that our high needs kids need to be in school, again, under the safest conditions possible. And by minimizing the number of students in the building, we believe we put our high needs kids in a very safe environment along with their teachers. in a very safe environment along with their teachers.
All set, Ms. Doherty? Thank you. And I think that's part of the only thing I'm going to say is on this testing is, I'm sure the state will change it again or adjust it and tell us how they're going to do it and how we're going to do it. So I I think it's just a wait and see, and then see if we can get some money for it. But certainly, as conditions warrant, I'm sure we're going to get into this later on, you know, next few months. That, Mr. Cabral, the superintendent's report concluded?
Just my last comment, Mr. Souza. I think you guys know me well enough that I always look under every rock, every nook, to try to find funding to help offset our costs. So, I mean, I'm having multiple conversations with multiple potential funding sources to try to mitigate our cost as much as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. The superintendent's report has concluded?
That concludes my report.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to accept his report.
Removed.
I hear a motion and a second. We don't need a roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan, just to show a hands, colleagues. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. The next we are going to go on to administrative business. These next two items are just the annual reports, and these are just informational. So if someone wants on both of them, Mrs. Almeida?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I hear a motion and a second. By a showing hands, because it's informational only, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you. Subcommittee reports. Finance and Law Subcommittee for 11621, Mr. Martin.
The Finance and Law Subcommittee met earlier this evening with myself, Mr. Souza, and Mr. Fiore, along with the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent Monahan. And there were four items on the agenda. First one was student activity accounts, which were none. Second item was to pay the bills in the amount of $1,97,630.51, and that was approved by the committee unanimously. Third item was a grant update regarding COVID. We had three grants that we looked at. Excuse me. One was a remote learning grant, which expired on December 31 of 2020. All funds were expended. And again, we had a follow-up as to what was expended on. A second item was a another reopening grant, COVID-related, and that one also expired on December 31, 2020. And we had some discussion on that. And the third one was the the Biggie, the CARES Grant, as it's called. And that grant was originally for two point, just over $2 million until June of 2021. So right now, it has a balance of $832,598.27. And there was some discussion around what we purchased and so forth and so on. And if anyone has any questions, I would ask them to ask Ms. Monahan right now, because I don't have all the answers.
Mrs. DeMello.
Thank you, Chairman, through you to Ms. Monahan. On page six, there are two. One is the New Era Technology for LEDI telephone. What is that actually represent?
Sorry, are you looking at the warrant? Is that what you're looking at?
Yes, are we on the warrant? Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, run the grants, Greg, if you could just hold off.
Okay.
Run the grants. Anyone have any questions on the grants?
Sorry about that.
That's okay. All right, now we can go back to the warrant.
I have, okay, I I'm seeing that. I'm sorry. For $3,706 for New Era, what happened was we needed to go ahead and replace what is called the Fibridge at LEDI School. So it's a piece of equipment that does our voice phones at LEDI.
Okay. And if I may, through you, Mr. Chairman, G. Lopes, same page, Athletic Department Supplies, 3,222.40. What is that for, please?
That is considered, that is what we purchased for stone dust for the high school athletic fields.
Stone dust. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Mr. Martin, continue, please.
Okay, so moving on to the fourth item, which was a facilities update. Basically, Ms. Monahan told us that the punch list that Mulcahy is being taken care of as we speak. We also have some dividers that are being installed between desks, as it is, or between teacher stations and student stations. Ms. Monahan, you want to elaborate on that a little bit better?
Sure. The desk dividers are considered to be like a three-sided divider that is placed on each teacher's desk and also on student's desk. It's almost like the science fair, three the three-sided science fair projects that you see the students use, as Mr. Cabral is now putting one in his office. Thank you, Mr. Cabral. So those have been purchased for all of our students and all of our teachers. You're a great model. Thank you.
Looks like you're a bank teller.
We tried them all.
And the last two, the last, the last two items under the facilities update was the HVAC systems that both Martin and Bennett School have been updated. I believe the one at Bennett School is being updated for better flow of of air and so forth and so on. And the city's, the city's CARES Grant is taking care of that. So kudos to the city for coming through on on that. And that's the report of the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
The chair will entertain a motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendation of Finance and Law, the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
Removed.
I hear the motion from Mr. Fiore, seconded by Mr. Palowski. Mrs. Fagan, it's a roll call vote, please.
You got a you got a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. DeMello.
Thank you, Chairman. Once again, on page six, I respectfully ask, respectfully ask the vote present on voucher number 14923, in the amount of $1,728. And the same on page seven, voucher number 14923, in the amount of $97,500. Present on vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Ms. Ms. Divine, did you get those, please? Yes, thank you very much. Should they record it, Mrs. DeMello? On the motion, Mrs. Fagan, a roll call vote, please.
Okay, that's with those.
With the with the
Okay. Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes, yes, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza.
Yes. The next item on the Subcommittee Reports is the Special Program Subcommittee from 12:30, 2020. And that's the the chairperson, that is Mrs. Doherty.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Souza. Let me start again. Thank you, Mr. Souza. As Chair of the Special Project Subcommittee, Mr. Cabral asked me to bring the committee together, which includes Mr. DeMello and Mr. Palowski, to have a conversation with Marquise Taylor about the possibility of bringing the Coaching for Change program back into the district. Marquise is so much pleased with the outcome of the program over the past years, that he has spent some considerable time raising sufficient funds to bring the program back, starting sometime in February. So we met with with him and Mr. Cabral to just kind of get a feel for what the program might look like during this time of a different configuration in our school. So we did have that conversation and asked Mr. Taylor to bring back a fully developed plan, which we will see. We're next meeting on the 14th of January, early in the morning. And subsequent to the presentation of that plan, the committee will recommend or not the plan to you at a subsequent meeting for your consideration. So that is my report. Thank you very much.
Miss Doherty's the next, at the next meeting, he'll have a more in-depth plan, and you, and at that time there, he you'll you'll have a recommendation or not. Thank you.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
I heard Mr. Martin has a motion, made the motion, and Mrs. DeMello seconded it on a roll call vote. Mrs. Fagan.
Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes no. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
I abstain.
Okay, Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is new business. Before I get to new business, I'd just like to congratulate on our our new and re-elected representatives. And I know Mrs. Doherty, they were all sworn in today, this morning. Mrs. Mrs. Doherty represents Part of Taunton, and Pat Hadad represents Part of Taunton, and Norman O'Roane represents Part of Taunton. So congratulations to the three reps.
Thank you.
And moving right along, we have a second reading for Job Descriptions and Technology Integration Specialist and Teachers Technical Support Liaison. What are the wishes of the committee? The chair will entertain a motion to move those to a third and final reading.
移除了
I thank you, Mr. DeMello. Mr. Martin made a motion, Mr. DeMello seconded it. On discussion, Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We need to vote on those separately. I can vote on the one new position, but I can't on the teacher liaison, because my wife is one of them. So I'd like to have separate votes on them.
No problem. No problem for me.
Okay, so we'll do the Technology Integration Specialist motion first. On the motion, Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll.
Yes. Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes, yes, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza.
Yes. And I'm assuming, Mr. Martin, you want to make the same motion?
Yes.
For the Teachers Technical Support Liaison, Mr. Mr. DeMello, did I hear you seconded it?
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you. On a roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan.
Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan votes, yes, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business, Virtual School Committee Retreat. One of my colleagues contacted me with with a couple of potential items. I'm still reviewing those. And if Mr. Cabral and I have some ideas, we may decide to stretch that till February, depending on our ideas and and things like that. But it's, we should have some conclusion on that pretty soon. It's it's tough to do that via Zoom, but we're going to, we're trying to get the process from that is 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 in our heads, so we can make everyone's time useful if we do have that retreat. Thank you, everyone. Any action? I don't see any action items that need to come off right now, unfortunately. We're just in that situation. That, any other questions? Nope. The next item on the agenda is K, and that is the Executive Session. The chair will entertain a motion to go into Executive Session and a roll call vote on a motion to go into Executive Session to discuss strategies with respects to litigation on personnel matters pursuant to Exemption III, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, and to reconvene in open session. Do I hear a motion?
移除了
Thank you, Mrs. Thank, thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Did I hear Mrs. DeMello second that?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. On a roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan.
Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes, yes, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza.
Yes. The chair will entertain a motion to come out of the Executive Session.
移除了
Second.
Mrs. Almeida motioned, and Mrs. Fagan seconded it. Mrs. Fagan, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes, yes, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza.
Yes. There was one motion made in the Executive Session. And the motion was to approve two settlements as presented in an executive session by the administration. That is, that concludes that. Executive Session and K, we're going to go to L, press time. We're going to go to this time.
Move Recommendation of Executive Session, Roll Call Vote.
Oh.
Second.
Okay.
Mrs. Doherty?
Seconded, Roll Call Vote.
At Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes, yes, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
No.
And Mr. Souza.
Yes. Moving on to L, press time. There's no press here. The chair wanted to take a motion to adjourn.
移除了
Mrs. Mrs. Almeida motioned, and Mrs. Fagan seconded it on a roll call vote, because we don't want anybody to squeak out early. So let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Fagan votes, yes, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Good night, everybody.
Have a great weekend, everyone. Stay safe. Stay healthy.